Call to order, Apache Junction City Council Work Session, roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Nessar.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Presentation and discussion of the lane closures on South Ironwood Drive between State Route 24 and US 60.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Rudy Esquivias, Interim Development Services Director. We're going to get into a presentation here in just a couple of minutes by Mr. Don Trujillo of Garnet Construction to explain to us the improvements that are going to be happening on Ironwood within the next year or so. But before we do that, we thought we'd show you this short video, which gives you the scope of what is going on out there as of about ten days ago. This video is about a day and a half old. Basically, what we're looking at here on the west side of Ironwood is the Brookfield property. Of course, this is drone footage, and you can start to see the streets being carved out, that their row of trees you see there is a nursery, plants that will be replanted on site. And now we're heading easterly. Once again, the streets, the retention areas, you can almost start to see individual neighborhoods. See the work trucks, work trucks there off to the left. This part of the Brookfield property is more or less a square half mile. It's, Brookfield has about two square miles, and Horton, D.R. Horton, of course, has the other two square miles. This is all on the east side of Ironwood. And as we head west again. Trucks look like little ants out there, watering down the site, keeping the dust down. And once again, on the top left, right part of the screen, you see Ironwood, and beyond that is the D.R. Horton property. And they are also very much under construction. And now we're looking south towards Queen Creek. Okay. So that said, Mr. Mayor, we're going to have a short presentation by Mr. Trujillo. This is the, can you back up just one there, Matt, please? Whoops, sorry. He's going to give us a project description, the scope of the project, timeline for the improvements on Ironwood, some of the scheduling details, the traffic control system that has been discussed with staff, engineering staff, public safety staff, and of course, where to direct complaints if and when they come in, and ultimately our conclusions. And as we saw from the short video, Mr. Mayor, development had bought both the Horton properties and the Brookfield properties is moving at a very fast pace. Mass grading is well underway, as we demonstrated. The infrastructure of the backbone, the installation of the backbone infrastructure is under construction. Construction of sewer water facilities on Ironwood will cause traffic delays because the lanes are going to have to be narrowed up. And once again, the Ironwood improvements are expected to take about a year. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce Mr. Trujillo to give you the rest of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, rest of the council. As Rudy had mentioned, I serve for Garnet Construction, one of the premier wastewater pipeline contractors in the nation. We're one of the largest purchasers of pipelines. We've done a lot of work for A.J. Water District, for Superdishes Mountain, Community Facilities District, Mesa, Quinn Creek, basically the whole East Valley. So we're very familiar with this area here. In fact, one of my superintendents is an A.J. resident, and another superintendent is just farther south as well, too. To give you an idea in terms of the overall scope, as you showed in the flyover, what you can see here is actually the colored development you can see off to the, I guess, to my right-hand side. That's actually the north end of this development that Brookfield and D.R. Horton is currently building. We are in the process of gearing up to get ready to start building the actual infrastructure that will support not only that development, but all the rest of the development as it continues moving forward north. I apologize, I don't, I guess I'll, you know, use this. And it really starts with some upgrades to the water treatment plant, a new water campus that's going to be right there at the Floodway Canal in Ironwood, in terms of servicing the water. And in terms of impacting it, we have a water line going from the existing water treatment plant down Ironwood, and it'll actually connect into our water campus that we're building, and then continue south all the way about to a middle, to that road right there, which will be eventually Selina Avenue. And that's going to be eventually what's going to provide water, potable water to the whole development as well, too. Another aspect of our scope of work, too, is at the wastewater, at the wastewater treatment plant, we're going to be building a non-potable water reuse facility. That's basically a storage tank with a pump. They're going to take effluent water off the wastewater treatment plant and use it for irrigation. And with that, the reservoir will be built on the site, but we'll need to build a pipeline on the east side of Ironwood that'll very similar go down and go all the way down to Ironwood, and then actually turn off a Warner, and from Warner it'll go all the way down to Ray Road. We also have, while we're doing here, although it doesn't affect the traffic as much, we actually have also a sewer force main. There's a lift station that's being built approximately at Meridian and Erie Road, which is about another mile south of this area. And we'll be building a force main that comes up, up Meridian Road, up the Floodway Canal, crossing Ironwood, and then it stays in the shoulder area, going all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. Long story short, you know, the development's going to bring in a lot of, as the development brings in a lot of new residents, we have to now move forward to actually building the infrastructure that you're going to need to service your residents. In terms of a general timeline of what we've been working, Garnet's actually been working with Brookfield since about December, in terms of we got signed off, and we recognized that Ironwood would be a major impact, and we needed to work on it right away. So we've been working from, pretty much from February to April, with Apache Junction, their engineering department, their public safety department, everybody to try and get everybody's concerns accounted for and addressed. And then obviously today, I'm presenting to you, the council, and be able to answer any questions. Right now, the current, with this impact to Ironwood, that'll impact a lot of traffic. So right now, currently, we're expecting, we understand the expected opening of State Route 24 is right now scheduled for a June-July timeframe, depending on just certain aspects of it, and we don't control that. But one of the good benefits we have right now is due to the supply chain issues, we actually can't get pipe here until about August-September timeframe. So actually, when we originally thought we were going to start this a lot sooner, with regards to 24 not being open, we've actually now pushed that back farther in terms of actually putting that into a timeframe where State Route 24 should be open and accessible for traffic to start going down there. So right now, our current schedule shows us to go ahead and start in the August timeframe of moving traffic. We're going to start on the water line, which is right now currently in the southbound lane. So we'd move traffic over to the northbound lane in order to install all the water lines. Once we have all the water lines installed and tested, we repair the roads, then we'd actually flip traffic back over, move traffic from northbound, now everybody will be on southbound traffic, and then that allow us to put in that NPW, that non-potable water line, to go down Ironwood as well, too. All told, by the time we get done, we would start in August timeframe, and our pipelines are projected right now to finish in May of 23, May of 23 right now. And this is just an overall view of our schedule, of what we currently have. We have it broken up in terms of details, but in May, we would start, or I'm sorry, in August, we would start doing our traffic control, as I noted with the southbound Ironwood. One of the impacts is there's some culverts that we've got to get under and do jack and bores that we're going to have to actually open up a wide excavation. That's what limits, one of our limits as from being able to use the southbound traffic, so. But once we have all that pipeline in, we'll repave it and stripe it, flip it back over, and then complete the. The NPW is not actually as much as the water line, so we'll actually be able to complete that in a little bit faster pace than we would in the water line, just due to the lengths of the water. So what you're looking at right now is a cut sheet showing our proposed alignment. This is actually looking north on Ironwood, if you were standing, if you're standing in the middle of the road. What you're seeing on the bottom is the existing lane spacing, which is about 36 foot. Our, the water line that we're installing is this 30, water line noted here, this 30-foot off, and then also this other water line that's a 40-foot off. So as you can see, we're impacting traffic, there's just not enough space. So we'll move traffic over to this side, there is enough space with some restriping and some barrels, and some traffic controls, safety, to go ahead and have a single lane for both ways. We've worked with the public safety to allow some additional turnoffs for accidents and stuff, and we'll have signs for that. And also for emergency vehicles, they will be able to access our side of the construction zone. So basically, every day, we'll clean up and make sure that during evening or weekends, that that, that the access on our construction zone is open. And then even during the day, when they start seeing a, obviously, emergency vehicle coming down, we'll clear that out and get that lane available for their use. One of the biggest things I would invite to note is, you know, Ironwood recognizes that it's really, people go fast on it right now. I guess my biggest challenge is to invite you to imagine, Ironwood will eventually be like a normal street, like the rest, in the rest of the valley, in the sense that they will not be going 65 miles an hour, they should be going 35 to 45 dollars per hour. We just happen to be the first one that has to start doing it for, to get people used to that kind of traffic in that speed zone.
Is that what you expect the speed limit to be, 35?
We actually recommend to move it down to 35 speed limit, yes. One of the major concerns, so the main, the three big major concerns that we've developed is obviously public complaints. And one of our solutions to this, and what we've done on all of our other pipelines that we've run through the facility, through cities, is basically, we will, we will be as the first point of, point of contact for any complaints. We're actually going to ask to work with the city to put this on your website. We actually have, hopefully, I think I can click on these, and maybe they'll take me there. These are our live websites that we have, it might not go through, I don't know, I apologize. But these websites, oh, there it is. So this is a website, a community development website, we'd like to get out there and spread the word. The biggest information we'd like to do is in terms of contacting us for complaints. We generally respond within 24 hours to complaints, we expect to get a lot of complaints from a lot of people, especially when it starts coming through. But we're working with Mac Pro Industries, Mac Pro Industries is one of the leading public relations firms in the valley. She actually works a lot with Pinal County and Quinn Creek, so she's very familiar with the area down there in terms of getting a lot of the communication out. We're not actually impacting too many of Apache Junction residents, we're actually impacting other residents outside, which that's going to be one of the major items there. But, so one of our major concerns is we're going to handle that public relations, they shouldn't be calling the mayor, they shouldn't be calling Gail or Ms. Evans. They should be calling us first, notifying us through this means, and we'll respond accordingly and do our best to, if there's any issues to. Go back here. I think I should go back. Yep, there we go. Where did it go? There it is. So that's one of the main concerns, we want to be the first point of contact for any and all complaints, so that you are not disturbed by it. We hope to be that, and we invite you, when you start getting those calls and complaints, to refer back to our website. We keep the website up to date with terms of our schedule, updating any major items to that. Another major concern is the backup of Guadalupe and US 60, both eastbound, or both southbound and northbound, depending on the time of traffic, obviously, morning versus evening. And so our proposed solution, which we've used in the past, is to hire an off-duty police officer to actually basically be at those light switches, and they're monitoring the traffic going through there to allow that flowing through faster. Obviously, Guadalupe and even going further up to baseline doesn't have as much side traffic, and sometimes a lot of the traffic just gets backed up from the fact that the light just turned red. But this will allow the police officer to go ahead and flip the switch, move them forward, and basically get as much traffic flowing through before, to get the traffic going as slow through, so it doesn't back up all the way to say, you know, Ray, hopefully, which doesn't know the single lane. And then, as I noted earlier in my presentation, we work with the public safety department to allow, to provide use of the construction zone for use of safety vehicles, and we're going to provide additional signage and vehicle turnoff areas available, increase of an accident or some impact to that. Overall, with the anticipated work to begin with State Route 24 opening up, we're looking at opening, as I noted, in August of 2002 is when we'll start trying to notify, not only notifying the public, we'll be putting out electric sign boards, showing the people, hey, expect traffic control, expect delays, find a different mode of, an alternate route if possible. And then we've also worked for the past three months, working with the Apache Junction staff, to hopefully address the concerns. We recognize this is one of the largest, it is the largest utility project in, that the city's ever seen, so we recognize there's a lot of concern about that. But our single traffic control right now is the most cost and schedule efficient. It minimizes impact to the existing road in terms of having to actually build up, you know, in terms of impacting the road for construction. If you've driven down that, obviously, you know the slopes on the side are very steep, and that's going to get fixed with the expansion, so. And also, we don't require additional design, and it allows for us to actually produce. By us getting that traffic off of us, we're actually, allows us to get production faster and actually get done faster, because we're actually moving faster and installing that pipe sewer. And then by slowing down traffic, making it down a traffic lane, it also, it will be safer for the traveling public if they, of course, follow the current rules. With that, I, that is my presentation. I want to thank you again, I just open if anybody has major questions or concerns.
Well, one of the things I would like to, I'm going to say, address, and number one, it is going to impact, excuse me, the residents to the south, much more than it is the city of Apache Junction. And I do know that somehow we need to possibly even work with the county in notifying the residents in their area of what's going to be happening and what's, you know, the ramifications on it. Yes, I've driven that route many times, and you're right, they do go fast, even faster than, you even mentioned a 60 miles an hour, much more beyond that. And it is something that, if you look at it early in the morning and you see the traffic, and this is before the 24 is completed, of course, it's a solid line of traffic coming up in the morning, it's a solid line of traffic going south. Hopefully, the 24 will be able to absorb most of it, but I still look to see a lot of people still coming, attempting to come all the way up to 60 because of where they work in this. And, you know, in any way we can work together with the sewer district and the water district and the city to help get the word out, I definitely encourage in any way, shape, or form that we can do it. Because that would help any way, aspect for them to understand what's going on and maybe alleviate some of the problems that are going to happen.
Yes, sir, yes. And that's our plan and intent, to work with everybody to get as much of the word out.
Okay. Just, no other questions, I guess?
No.
We'd just like to share news like this early and often, this kind of goes to your point. And Al Bravo's here, and we already are working with the county, and it's a main.
Krista, you have a question?
No, no, mine more answered was the timeline on the opening, and then our ongoing question whether water is potable or potable. Thank you.
That's it. Okay, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion regarding fireworks and the annual Fourth of July celebration. Liz. Boom, I heard that.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Liz Langenbach, the Parks and Recreation Director for the city. I'm just going to pull this up real quick. So as we had shared with you in your weekly report, we do have a couple of challenges with this year's Fourth of July celebration that we just wanted to bring to your attention and have a conversation, so that way everybody's kind of on the same page as we work through some of these challenges this year. First, our easiest issue has been resolved, so the fabulous news that the Apache Junction High School Track and Field is being renovated is really great, it did offer some challenges, because our general viewing area is here at the track. It will not be, excuse me, it will not be complete in time, they will be doing off and on construction there, and so it will not be usable as far as sitting out here and watching the fireworks. So immediately, the school district reached out, once they knew their schedule, to kind of start talking about alternative solutions and help us to find other locations. We've met with the school district and the fire department, as well as our current, our fireworks company that normally does our fireworks, to talk about where else could we be here that still would be a great event. And so normally, our fireworks are shot off in this general vicinity, right here. And so we've just kind of moved it over a little bit, we will use the baseball field as the location for all of the shells and basins to be shot off, and then that just moves our drop zone over a little bit. We are anticipating going from this area here to moving down to these four ball fields down here as our primary viewing areas. After being out there, we, you can still see very well, we have a lot of folks that still park in some of these other areas and just watch from their cars, it's not going to affect them in any way. As you can see, this football field that we would typically fill up quite a bit is, you know, fits nicely into this area, but we'll have all four viewing areas, so we should have plenty of room for our viewing and to be able to have our normal activities, just be in a little bit different location. Instead of this parking lot filling up first, and overflow being down here in their south parking lot, we would be encouraging folks to park down here in the south parking lot, it's much bigger than this north parking lot. And, but we'll still be utilizing all the same areas that we normally do. So we've just had some initial conversations, we just want to share with you what some of those thoughts are, in case you're hearing anything, and then kind of move into what our real issue is, which is fireworks themselves. But just to let you know, so we have talked with the fire department and the school primarily. We start our interdepartmental special event planning meetings coming up here in the next week or two. So then moving on to the real issue, which is getting fireworks. So there's a fireworks shortage across the nation, you know, just as you heard about, there's material shortages in every industry and every project, you know, that's happening right now. Fireworks are no different, they're usually, they're manufactured in China, and due to the recent shutdowns, they had trouble getting them manufactured, everything is manufactured now, but sitting on about 14 cargo containers in China waiting to be shipped to us. Our company, Fireworks Productions, who we've had for the last 25-plus years of our fireworks show, has heard good news that they expect their fireworks to be shipped at the end of this week. However, until they know that they have that ticket and that it's on its way, they are not signing contracts with any of the cities. So they've, they've let us know early on that they're not committing a contract yet until they get there. We're all in the queue, we're all cities that normally would have our fireworks. If they get those shipments, we shouldn't have any major issues. If they do not, there are some other minor options, so some, they do have some smaller fireworks that we absolutely could use, would still be a good show, it wouldn't necessarily be the extravagant thing that we normally have, but that is still a potential option, depending on what they have and how they divide that out amongst the 20-some-odd shows that they do on Fourth of July across the state. Because we've been with them for so long and have never, I think we've canceled one time in 25 or 30 years, we're definitely high on their list, that, at least, that's what they've shared with us. So in the meantime, of kind of knowing Jamie and her team, Jamie Sullivan, our Recreation Superintendent, and her team have been looking at options since about February, so we were all kind of finding out at the same time. It's been a major topic amongst all the Parks and Rec departments. We have looked at some other alternatives, such as, some, a couple of cities are looking at a drone or a laser show. It doesn't really fit so well with where our, we don't have a backdrop or something that a laser show really lends itself well to. We have reached out to several companies, and nothing really has come to fruition from any of those. The other, there are a couple of, a few other fireworks companies in, that will do the state of Arizona, they're smaller. Our biggest concern is that they don't provide the same type of insurance, and they don't have the same history that we've had. And so while I would say we would reach out, we would be on the hook for purchasing a much higher insurance that we typically don't, so it's not out of the question. The other problem with those eight, those is that they have a much smaller workforce, and so right now, any of the cities that have decided to go with that smaller insurance amount, they're having to move their date to July 1st or July 2nd, and we're just really not excited about changing the date of our event. It has been looked at, though. We've tried to see what other cities are doing, just so we can kind of plan, but I would say it's about a half and half of those that are still waiting, so Fireworks Productions does most of the city fireworks shows throughout the state. So about half of us are waiting to hear that information, the other half have already decided either to not have fireworks and do other, you know, abandon other activities to do, like I said, there's a few that are doing a drone or a laser show option, and then there are a few that went with another company. And so that's kind of where we're at right now, and we just wanted to share that with you and offer, if there's any other thoughts that you had, or if you have some opinions on, is on is a event without fireworks still something that, you know, we should, we should still strive for? You know, I think that it is as we start to learn a little bit more, but we just wanted to open up for discussion.
I know a guy.
Everybody knows a guy, by the way. So there were several directors that were gonna make a trip to Mexico to get their fireworks. It's just finding somebody who'll actually shoot them off and taking the risk. If you know a guy, let us know.
Yeah.
Any of you that do, we're happy to research it. We've researched many, many other options.
Your Honor?
Yes, yes.
So Liz, um, I know this is down the road, but, um, I, I kinda had this question on my mind, and I know it's not particularly what we're talking about for this year. Um, I think whatever we do is gonna be great, just because we have great staff and, um, they can just take the ball and run with it, whatever the situation is. So whatever our event is gonna be, I'm sure it's gonna be great for the families and the community. Do you ever foresee this event moving to the, uh, rodeo ground?
You know what? I'm, thank you for bringing that up, because we did wanna mention that we did explore other, this was a great opportunity to explore other venues. Um, the challenge with the rodeo grounds and Prospector Park are that it is so close to the desert, so
Yep.
Because of our fire danger out there, we have discussed with the fire department and Fireworks Productions, and if it was in the winter, um, like the Centennial was, we'd really have less concern, but being in the summer, we think it's probably never gonna be able to be out there. Additionally, because of all the, um, horse property and horses in general just do tend to have challenges with all the fireworks that people are shooting off, and so we just don't wanna contribute a thirty-minute show to that
Yep.
Challenge. So those were our two reasons not to. So thanks for asking.
Yeah, actually, I had something, a comment to go along with that that's been a concern, and I don't know if, um, if staff, I don't know if Bryant might be able to answer, but this is a concern, Liz, and thank you for bringing that up, 'cause it was kinda my next, uh, question to lead into or comment to lead into is, um, being a horse community, it's an issue every year for us personally. Um, we have horse property in an area where the majority of our neighbors do not, and these aerial fireworks go off, um, and, and, um, it's very difficult to try to control a large animal that's upset by these aerial fireworks. And so I'm wondering if there's a plan, um, to put information out there. It's just, it's just odd to me that in our state, we can buy these aerial fireworks, but they're illegal to set off. It, it makes no sense. But what can we do for the, um, what can we do to just educate the community on the dangers of that? I, I've got neighbors that go for weeks on end before and after all the holidays where you can buy fireworks, and it just never fails, it's always the aerial ones. And, um, you know, again, most, the majority of my neighbors do not have horse property, and so they have no clue what those of us, those couple of us that do have horses and large animals, what we have to deal with when they're blowing these things off. What can we do?
Your Honor, maybe I can touch base on this a little bit. The, the regulatory environment has changed in Arizona. For many years, it was illegal to have any firework at all. Uh, not too many years ago, the state legislature allowed for certain types of fireworks, of which none are aerials. In fact, if you're purchasing or if you're aware of any aerial sold in Apache Junction, please call my cell number. I would love to address that. We are not, no one's supposed to be selling any of those, and Chief Pooley and Chief Whitney and I will come up with a plan on, on those. In fact, the fire department has been really serious about watching some of those in terms of some of the desert fires that we've had have destroyed some of our most precious deserts in the la, not from fireworks, but from fire. So there's a significant risk in our area. There is a bill that's going on in the legislature this year that Mayor Wilson and I are watching very closely, and there is more. I would call it the pendulum swinging the other direction, um, in terms of do these really add value to the actual date and time and energy that's, of these aerials? So maybe, um, there's more emphasis that we need to make when we do the policy statements with the League of Cities and Towns, that if the mayor council really wanna weigh in on that. I mean, it's a little bit different than what we're talking about tonight, but in terms of public, um, information, Al, um, we'll definitely do all we can to do that. Maybe we do a special discussion with Chief Whitney and see how the fire department. We are literally running around all night long, New Year's Eve, and, um, and even during those, it's not just, uh, horses, it's, it's, it's the livability, quality of life that we enjoy in Apache Junction.
Yeah.
It's also our dogs and our cats.
Right.
And so it's just, it's just, it's something I, I, you know, I'm, I'm a resident here and I see it, and I, it's like, oh, it's getting really bad. And we, we do take calls and try to run all over the place, and we, we have five officers and, you know, a couple trucks, and it's, it's tough to stay up on. So we're also interested in doing what we can to get the information. Maybe we need to start earlier, Al. I don't know. The enforcement's really tough, and, and we've tried different avenues of, of trying to get the word out to help people know that's illegal.
So Bryant, can you clarify? So it's not even, it's not even legal to buy them? It's not that you can, it's not that it's legal to buy them and just not legal to set them up? It's not even legal to buy them?
That is correct, yeah. When you, when you look
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's correct.
So then when we have people that have them, what, what are, how are, do we, are we checking like these, uh, booths that come into town to make sure that they're not, I mean, I don't know what we do.
We absolutely do. We absolutely check the booths. We, we look at Walmart, we look at the places that are selling, and they're usually, I've never had a report that those have been ever aerials. I'm thinking they, I don't know, Matt, maybe Amazon?
Yeah.
You can go to New Mexico, Silver City.
I'm their place in Arizona.
Any, any place outside, Utah, other places, and people can bring them in, but, um, I don't think even like Costco, you go in there, and those are all, at least in Arizona, they're all the, the ground mounted.
Yes.
Well, we need to go talk to my neighbors and find out where they're getting them, 'cause I, I got three of them that just seem to know.
Yeah.
Well, one, one of the things that passed in the legislation, and I'll just throw this out in the aspects on it, it's already gone to the governor, and I understand he's already signed it, and that is putting a, I'm gonna say a limitation on the times when they can be set off and everything, but again, that, the aerials are currently illegal anyway. And, uh, so if they're not paying attention to the times and they're setting off aerials, they, they don't care.
Yeah, this is the first one that does, I agree with you, Mayor, that's gonna come back the pendulum, but it's still not dealing with the aerials.
Nope.
I don't know how we're in, I don't know where they come from either.
And of course, my horses just love that, 'cause they get all excited and run around and trying to calm them down is real difficult. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, presentation discussion on proposed agreement with Flock.
Good evening, Mayor.
Bird, right?
No. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, Mike Pooley, Chief of Police, and Commander Joe Penzi, who's gonna be helping me out up here. We're here to talk about a new technology that we wanna bring to Apache Junction Police Department. It's known as Flock Safety. I'm very familiar with it from my previous experience, and I'm here to talk a little bit about it. Uh, so what is Flock? Flock is known as an automatic license plate reader, or ALPR is what a lot of people refer to them. Basically, what it is, is it's a camera that's mounted onto a light pole that catches the rear of a vehicle as a vehicle goes by, and it catches, captures the license plate. Does not capture the front of the vehicle, and it does not capture any faces or occupants of the vehicle. So who is Flock? Flock was established in 2017. It was actually designed by the owner to, um, to help homeowners associations when there were people that were breaking into vehicles. It has since become so popular and, and successful in apprehending individuals, law enforcement has been one of the main customers that's been wanting to do this. Uh, there's over fifteen hundred cities that are currently using Flock. Uh, some of those here in Arizona are Tempe, uh, Queen Creek just went on, Youngtown, Maricopa, and Tucson. So there's several other agencies that are currently looking at going to Flock. So what is Flock and what's the primary purpose of it? It's, um, it's to help fight crime. It's really to help us identify and apprehend suspects in a very quick manner. It also helps us recover stolen property, stolen vehicles, which has been a huge, uh, increase across the country and here across in Arizona and even here in Apache Junction. Just in the last two years, we have noticed a, a trend of vehicles being stolen, uh, almost doubling within the last three years for the first quarter of this year compared to last. Um, it also, when we do this and we get these apprehensions and these suspects that are identified, it also increases the, the feeling of safety amongst residents when they know that the police department is able to locate somebody, identify them, and apprehend them very quickly, and oftentimes recover property that's been stolen. Uh, it, it really does increase the, um, feeling of safety. It also helps us get leads and investigations. It's, um, you know, a lot of times we'll get videos that have or descriptions of vehicles of, uh, a white vehicle that was used in a crime, whether it was a burglary, a robbery, or somebody's stealing Christmas decorations, and we get a grainy video of a white vehicle or whatever kind of vehicle, truck. What this technology allows us to do, it allows us to use, um, artificial intelligence, I, AI, to put in the description of the vehicle to include whether it had bumper stickers, the color, the, whether it had damage, whether it had, um, a roof rack, tinted windows. We're able to narrow that down to come back and say, yeah, this is the vehicle. And, uh, it's been proven to be very successful. It also gives us real-time alerts in, to our police officers. So how does that happen? All of our officers are equipped right now with computers in their vehicles. When there is a vehicle that's been entered into the National Crime Information Center, known as NCIC, it's a law enforcement database that's used throughout the entire country. And if somebody enter, if a law enforcement official enters a vehicle, whether it's an amber alert, a stolen vehicle, a silver alert, a blue alert, some of these things that we've heard, if it's entered into this database, if that vehicle happens to be coming through our city, if we put these cameras up, it'll give an immediate notification to our police officers that are out on the street to let them know that that vehicle is going through this intersection at that moment, and our response time is able to get there immediately and, uh, take action on, on the suspects. The other thing is, is this data, is this shared amongst law enforcement? Everything that we get out of these cameras is not shared in the private sector. It's only for law enforcement purposes. One thing that, important to note, is that there are many companies that currently use, um, LPRs, automatic, or ALPRs, Automatic License Plate Readers. They're going around on tow trucks, on different vehicles that go through, uh, apartment complexes, uh, stores, trailer parks, just scanning license plates. They sell that data to companies, even to law enforcement. What we're gonna be getting out of Flock is specifically for law enforcement purposes only, and it will not be sold. We're also able to get investigative leads out of this. An example would be as if, uh, there's a, uh, and, and I'm familiar with this case from, uh, my previous agency, where there was a, um, a robbery at a bank. Somebody gave a brief description of the vehicle. There was no really good suspect description, but because of that vehicle description and the specific identifiers on that vehicle, this vehicle was seen going through the intersection at a specific location. We were able to get that license plate and take that person into custody. We are also, have been used for homicide investigations, sexual assault investigations, robberies, property crimes, and it's been very, very successful in apprehension of dangerous individuals. Some of the things that you may be asking is how, why, why would we be using this? We have a policy that's been written here in the Apache Junction Police Department that is specifically for criminal purposes. There is an audit trail that we can see who and why people are accessing this information. We'll, we will continue to, um, do random audits to make sure our officers are, um, do, using this appropriately and it's not being abused. The other thing is, is this data, it's purged every thirty days. After every thirty days, the license plates that were scanned are gone, and there's no way to, to get those license plates. If for some reason we need a license plate, we will be able to save that into our database and into the evidence for whatever kind of criminal investigation we're using. So right now, we're looking at putting fifteen cameras up in the city of Apache Junction. We've looked at all the ingress and egress points throughout the city and where we think there's the higher trafficking, uh, uh, higher traffic areas of people coming into the city. It will help us identify when people are coming into our city to, whether they're using a stolen vehicle or a vehicle that's, has been used in a crime that's been put into the NCIC or the National Crime Database, uh, will be able to be alerted. Also, it'll be, um, as, if there's a crime committed in Apache Junction and somebody's leaving, it'll also help us to see if somebody's leaving the, the city, what they were driving, and, uh, give us an identifier for us to start going to do some investigations on it. Right now, we are looking at doing a, a trial phase for, at one month, where we'll come back, report back to you, City Council, Mayor and City Council, and let you know whether or not this is worth the investment. Right now, we're look, we have been given a grant to pay for five cameras, and we're looking to use the general fund for the police department's, uh, budget to fund ten additional cameras for a total of fifteen cameras. The total cost would be, uh, forty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, um, just in my experience, I can tell you that this is, as technology changes, as crimes continue to grow across the country, we need to find ways to, to keep our residents of Apache Junction safe, and if they do, if they happen to become a victim of a crime, that we're able to help them and provide the service they need to, to bring justice to them. That being said, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
It'll be an interesting thirty days.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I have a few. I'm, I'll be honest, I'm not a fan. Um, so there are, there are a few things in the contract that I was reading. One of them was, oh geez, ten nineteen, third paragraph down, we're talking about, okay, so if something should happen to these cameras, vandalism, whether, whatever, um, the city's responsible to pay for these cameras, right? And then, oh, you know, we had the meeting and they usually don't get vandalized, but according to the contract, the city is allowed, or is responsible for paying for these cameras if they get damaged in some sort of way. And it also says that, um, we would have to get another insurance policy. We couldn't use our city insurance to pay for these damaged cameras. We'd have to buy another insurance, insurance policy for these cameras. And then there's also, um, in the contract stating that we would be responsible to running power to all of these cameras. That's not part of this forty-two thousand dollars, and I'm quite sure that would be quite, quite a bill for the city to have to run power to fifteen cameras. And on top of that, according to the contract, that if these cameras, if Flock doesn't feel like these, a camera in a certain spot isn't doing enough activity, they can say, oh, we suggest that you move this camera. And it would be our responsibility to run power to the next location and to have, and to pay them to move it. So at any given time, they may say, you know what, this camera in this spot here, uh, isn't doing what we would hope it would do, let's move it to this spot, but that falls on us to pay for that, running the power, moving the camera, the whole nine yards. And they can do this anytime they generally want, if they feel like a particular camera isn't working at any given time. So it almost seems like a, it could be a, um, a circle of, over the years, you know, we, oh, we've ended up moving five cameras in two years. Well, that's, that's another, you know, fifteen thousand dollars. One of the more important things that is, um, got me down is, in this meeting, I point blank asked, what would this cost the taxpayers? Nothing, we have the grant, we're only doing five cameras. Now I'm being asked to consider fifteen cameras and taking twenty-seven thousand out of the general fund. I think it'll be, as far as the city staff is concerned, if we hold meetings like this, be more forthcoming with me on the way it really is, instead of giving me some sugar coat about, oh, it's just five cameras, this grant's gonna cover it, we're gonna check it out. You know, I left the meeting in very, being very positive about it, but now I'm not so much. And also, I feel like there's a, a line between being the city's police and policing the city. Fifteen cameras in our small town, I feel is pretty excessive. So with that, I, I'm going to say that I, I do not support this program.
So to answer a couple of your questions, we do, these cameras are all run off of solar power.
Oh, but the contract states we must run power to every location.
They, they run off of solar power, and usually what we do is we'll put them to a city light pole, and that's where the power's running, but they don't use that light, they don't use that source.
Maybe so, but we need to have the power there. And being in the trades myself, if you hire electricians to pull power off a, a light pole and bring it to a location of this, uh, and bring it to a location of this camera, that's a couple thousand dollars. It would have to be there regardless whether or not it's working through solar or not, but that power would have to be there, ready to hook up and, according to the contract, in case you're in a spot where you're just not getting enough sunlight, I guess, I don't know, but it's not the solar, not operating. So, Grant, they do work off solar, but it's our responsibility to have power at the location of the camera.
So we do identify, we've already identified where we would want to put these cameras, and there is going to be no additional cost whatsoever to where we are going to need to run camera, power to. You know, having worked with Flock in the past, I can tell you, we've been very, myself and other cities in law enforcement have been very pleased and have not had any issues whatsoever. But I do understand your concern.
Well, I, I get it. I mean, if, if I gotta run power to, from me to the mayor, I gotta hire a licensed electrician to do so, and that's going to cost us money. All because it's in the general vicinity of where power's already at, that whip or that conduit line to run up for the power, that's going to cost the taxpayers money to do this to these cameras. And then every time we'd have to move one, we'd have to do that again. So, and we, and we would have to move them at the discretion of Flock. Because they're the ones, they're the ones going to say, okay, this isn't working so well right here, let's move it over here. And then we would have to out-of-pocket pay them to move it and pay to put the power back up on it. Or to it.
Your honor?
Not necessarily on it.
Yes. There is a representative from Flock here tonight that may be able to speak to some of the more technical details that are of concern in the contract.
Yeah, we have Craig Gardner. Would you mind coming up, Craig, and speaking to that, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you guys are doing great. Appreciate the comments, and also appreciate the concerns. So a couple of things that I think I could help clear up. We've run the agreement already through a legal review. One of the things that you came up around, or that you had mentioned around insurance, I need to get some more specifics on. I don't believe that's the case, but I will get specifics on, back to you.
Well, let me see if I can read this to you. Let's see, 1019, here we go. The consultant, so I'm assuming is you?
I'm not sure.
Is this your contract?
It's, it's a company's contract, but we've, I've sent through our legal team and through the Apache Junction's legal team, I'm just, I'm not a lawyer on it.
Okay, well, it said, the occult, the consultant's insurance shall be the primary insurance as respect the city. And any insurance or self-insurance maintained by the city shall not contribute to it. So that tells me that since we would be responsible for any lost, damaged, car ran into, we couldn't go through our city's insurance, we'd have to pay for an independent insurance company if we wanted insurance to cover this problem if this should happen. Is that, is that, Joel, is that what I'm reading?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Shorter, you're reading from section 10.19, and that is...
The third paragraph down.
And yes, when you have insurance, if someone has insurance, you have to look to them first before something else is paid out. That means primary insurance. So, yes, the consultant's insurance shall be primary. So you look to...
Which isn't us.
Correct, that is the consultant.
Right.
Which is Flock. And if their insurance is not enough, then the city's basically will contribute to it afterwards. But they are the primary. So if there's damage to some, some camera, it's not the fault of the city, then essentially they, they need to cover it. And there was, I, I got this contract pretty late, but I did go through what I thought was the major things, and we did change some things.
So this isn't even the contract?
Well, no, this is the contract that we ultimately agreed with.
Oh, that, okay, this already has the changes in it, then?
This has the, all the changes in it, yes. And, and I worked with the chief on it, and also with Anna, and also someone else from your company, I don't think it was you.
Kimberly?
I can't remember who it was, but we got, we got it done, but the city had to bend a little bit, and Flock did it also.
I could also speak to the, a couple other points that I think could clear up confusion, specifically around power and moving cameras, damaged cameras, those types of things. The cameras are designed to be LTE-enabled, so they actually have a transmitter inside of them, and they're powered completely off of a solar panel. It's very, very rare that we would ever need to put one on actual power or even have power to it. Almost, I've had hundreds, if not thousands, of these cameras installed, and they have, I actually carry one with me in my bag, and they definitely do not need to have power wired to them. That's not an expense that you're going to face. I've worked very closely with Commander on the, on the plan, and everywhere we've already put cameras on a map, we believe there's adequate sunlight to power it off of a solar panel. So there's no additional cost for anything like that. From a moving camera standpoint, we've also had our internal experts look at the map, and they've essentially said that these are the locations that will work. The police department has said that they, they will work as well. Now, if we wanted to move cameras every two weeks, obviously that's a pretty expensive thing for us.
Oh, yeah, it does say that. There is, there is a, a great, I mean, we're talking like after three, four months, you decide that camera's not doing what it should be doing, then you maybe recommend, I'm not saying you do it every two weeks, but I'm just, it, it is in the contract that you guys have the right to tell us to move the camera, and that would be on us to pay for that.
If, if the camera is not in a viable location, at the end of the day, it would be on, it would be on us for not setting it up correctly initially. That's really there for when someone says, for instance, we had a police department recently say, we need to, we need to take this camera that's functioning well on a pole, and we need to move it somewhere else. And for us, we have to come grab that camera, there's, there's costs associated with that, that would be actually moving the camera. There's a cost schedule for that on our website as well. It's, it's not exorbitantly expensive should you want to do that, but that's not, that's not typical practice for us to, to move cameras.
I appreciate that, but I mean, it's in the contract. So, I mean, after all said and done and signed, this, all this, you know, public hearing talk is just talk. The, let's see, Chris, do you have something to say?
I do, I'm just waiting.
Let's hear it. No, go right ahead, I'm, I'm looking up a few things.
So, a couple of questions. One, Joel, is the insurance, would that be similar to having to purchase individual insurance for damage to a cell phone where your homeowner's insurance wouldn't necessarily cover it? Is it, is that similar, this additional insurance that's being talked about?
I think you're, the concept, yes, council member, some insurance companies, they have different terms, so that's, it's kind of a broad generalization. But we, this is our insurance language that Mr. Shorter was talking about. And also, if I may, Mr. Shorter, I think section 2.9 is what you were talking about regarding the, the ability of Flock to say, it's not performing correctly or functionally. And so that, that, you are correct, that's section 2.9. And maybe the consultant can, representative can talk about that a little more, on when, under what circumstances would you tell a city, you've got to move this, it's not functioning properly?
That, that was my next comment, was I could see circumstances whereby lighting, blockage, those type of things might be an issue, maybe things aren't getting picked up properly. I can't imagine, I'm thinking, well, gee, we're not picking up enough activity, but there, there could be issues with it not working properly based on the specific location.
My, my understanding, and obviously from, I'm not an attorney representing Flock, but my understanding of our policies and how we move those is that should a camera need to be moved, let's say that one's too far from a roadway, or one is obscured by a tree that we can't trim or is unmovable in some capacity, is we'd, we'd call Chief Pooley and say, hey, we have this camera that's not performing up to what we thought it would deliver for you, like, we have a couple of options, we can move that, what do you want us to do? I would imagine Chief Pooley says, well, hey, you guys told us that area would work, if it's not working, you guys take care of it. That's what we would end up doing in that situation. If it's a, hey, we have a camera on this road, and we just, as a police department, would prefer to move it somewhere else, there's a cost associated to that, but we, we tend to pick very, very good spots. And that's why we're willing to put our money where our mouth is with that, essentially a 30-day registry trial saying, look, if you put these in to the, in, into the area, we'll show you the results. We had Round Rock, Texas, went online about two weeks ago. They had, in their first 48 hours, they had three hits for missing people, three stolen vehicles, and a stolen plate, as well as used in a homicide investigation. Same type of thing. And that's why we're willing to put our money where our mouth is when it comes to the odds of putting cameras in place and allowing them to, to run. The other thing that we can do, and I think maybe where some of the confusion came from, is if we have 15 cameras that we put in, that's still within what we're willing to do, even if it's on a pilot period. Should you guys end up not having success and want to go down to the, just the five that are funded by the grant, that's an option, and it won't cost the city anything.
You know, one other thing that comes to mind is, as we grow, we are going to need, obviously, to grow our police department, and that's going to include vehicles, it's going to include technology, and it's going to include manpower. When it comes to the safety of our community, I think the most recent, very tragic incident is a prime example that we have to do all that we can to protect our citizens. As a survivor and a victim of more than one violent crime, I know that there were instances where this type of technology would have been beneficial in my circumstances. I, I have little or no problem with this type of expense to help assist our officers in situations that could protect our people, catch bad guys, like we've got, you know, some we need to, we need to catch pretty quick. And so, I'm not sure how you put a dollar amount or a value on life and safety of a, of a community. I don't think it's unreasonable. I have nothing but the utmost respect for our chief and our department as a whole, our city staff. I believe that they are very aware and cognizant of how we spend taxpayer money. I don't feel like this is a, a wish list item. I don't think that they view taxpayer money as just a blank check. And so for me, I have questions. I think that, you know, we need to, you know, be sure that it is a good fit and be sure we get everything answered. But I don't think you can put, you can't short-change safety. I'll leave it at that.
Tess, you got any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may ask the chief a question?
Mm-hmm.
Chief, is, there's a, is there a deadline to spend the grant funds, and when is that?
Yes, there is. I believe it's the end of June. June 30th is the deadline to use the grant funds. Yeah, June 30th.
Any other questions?
I just want to have one comment, and as far as, the way I read the contract on the 2.9 is Flock advises the agency, but you don't make us change anything, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's my understanding.
If we want it there for one reason or another that works for us, we can leave them exactly where they are.
Yeah, one example of that is, we just had Somerton, Arizona, come on board. They've actually done a pilot previously as well, so they have a lot of experience with us. San Luis, their neighbor, just, just had a, some pretty big successes, I was talking to chief about, which was interesting. But the reason I bring that up is because we had one of our internal consultants go back and talk about one of the cameras that they want to put in a non-conventional area in a non-conventional way. And we, we advised them, hey, there's two lanes of traffic, we might not be able to get the second lane. We could, but we might not be able to. And they were able to, we were able to communicate about where we could put that to come to a better resolution, to get their outcomes, as well as the outcomes that we knew we could support and guarantee in the long run, because it is, it's a, it's a service essentially. We want to make sure that you guys are super happy with us. Our, our department retention rate's 195%, which is outstanding for the last two and a half years.
So, in the first initial 30 days, well, we have a good idea that the cameras are positioned correctly, and that's at no additional charge to us, correct?
Yes, ma'am. You'll, you'll know instantly that they're positioned correctly, and before we let the cameras come online, we validate them, we make sure they're reading how they are, and that's what we're essentially guaranteeing, is that service of having that, the, the good reads is what we call them internally, on, on a couple of lanes, and making sure that what we've said the cameras will do in the locations we said they will do them are in fact doing them and capable of continuing to do them for a prolonged period of time.
So you, you don't normally have a lot of camera movement once the initial pattern is set up, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
You make one, but you don't move all of them or...
Correct. It's very abnormal for us to move one. The most common thing we see is it works very, very well, like it has in other cities in Arizona, and police departments end up supplementing and covering additional areas as the city grows. And so that's the most common type of thing we see, but it's very, very rare to, to move a location outside of like, hey, we're going to change a street, and this camera needs to be moved because we're going to have a street down for a year or something like that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am?
Yes.
I have a question for Chief Pooley. Can you touch on a little bit and tell us, just for curiosity's sake, how you came up with the figure that you need 15 cameras? The state grant covers five, and then you're asking for 10 more. Well, why wasn't it just 14, or why wasn't it 17? How, how did, what process was used to determine how many and where they should be placed?
Well, good, what we did is we went around the city with Flock, actually, and we looked at where people are coming in, into the city, and where people are exiting typically on, and then also where there are, we get more calls for service. For example, one of the shopping center, Walmart, we get, we get more calls for service in that area, and we want to make sure that if there's a crime committed, we have all the lanes picked for that, that area for investigative purposes. We have areas that are on Ironwood. We have areas on Old West Highway. I can tell you right now, from the incident that happened last night, if Flock was available last night, we would have had a much easier way to identify the, the individual responsible for that crime. So when we looked at where the cameras we wanted to be placed, it is at all the, the ingress to the city, as well as all the exits from northeast, south, and west.
Your honor, the vice mayor has another question.
Yes?
I think this was for Chief Pooley, or probably more of us. You had mentioned that alerts get set off for a, a license plate that's in the system that's been associated with criminal activity?
Yes.
So, so you get an alert, so would that mean, we've seen, and, and again, as we continue to grow as a city, unfortunately, the, the need for law enforcement grows. We get more people that misbehave, and more bad guys that come around, and so we need, we need, we have the need for more law enforcement. So when, when you get an alert from this Flock system, we've seen the last couple years, some of our officers have had some serious, sustained some serious injuries, and, because bad guys don't like to get caught. This alert system, would that not allow, you get an alert, would that not allow you guys to zero in on a vehicle without the, the bad guy even realizing it until, until he, he's just about apprehended? Or he's not set off and in the middle of a confrontation, you guys are able to zero in on somebody with, quietly?
That is accurate. Couple of things that I'll hit on. Staffing is always a huge concern for law enforcement across the country. That includes here in Apache Junction. With this technology, what it does is it allows us to use our staffing in a, in a more tactical and advantageous way, where we are able to find suspects that they may not know that their vehicle is alerted to our officers, and get our officers in a, a specific area to take this person into custody in a safe manner. So, yes, to your question, it does allow us to do things safer. It does also notify us if the, if crime is coming into the city of Apache Junction.
Your honor, just as a reminder, we had...
Your honor, just as a reminder, we had, we put it on the agenda for consent, it may be something you want to either keep or pull, just wanted to make sure you're aware of that for tomorrow.
Oh, okay. All right. We have more more questions, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And presentation discussion of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, city of Apache Junction's wonderful budget.
Thank you, your honor. Bryant Powell, city manager, I'll kick this off, and then we'll turn it to Matt, and then over to Leslie, our finance director. We are at fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, it's time to start getting the budget presentations going tonight. Over a year and a half ago, the mayor and city council met and provided us some tremendous backdrop and framework for the goals and objectives for this city, and provided vision so that the department directors can establish a budget and be able to put their alignment of, of your vision and goals and objectives in, into a budget that is consistent with your policy. I am so grateful for a great budget staff, a great team, Leslie and your team, for being able to get to the point where we can present a draft balanced budget. Thank you, Matt and Anna, and the team in finance and budget. Also, wanted to thank, as you may know, this takes a couple of months to get together. We start with department directors to establish expenditures and the revenues that would present tonight, this budget. So, we want to thank all of our department directors who are here tonight and are here to answer questions. So, Matt, I'll turn it to you for the kickoff to some of the data on the budget.
Thank you, Bryant. And I'll just mention a couple high-level things about the budget, then turn it over to Leslie for more of the detailed presentation. You heard recently, mayor and council, the report from our auditor, who, who spent a lot of time with finance staff, as they do every year, and reviewed and reported how last year went. And you heard from them that things are going very well financially for the city. We're also in high-growth mode, as you're well aware. Over the past year, current budget year, we've hired a lot of additional staff, particularly in the development services department. So, that is one new expenditure that carries over into this new proposed budget. So, if, if I had to mention just two main things that the focus of this budget is, it's, it's one, a focus on our human capital, our, our great employees, and in, in the budget, you'll see a market study to try to keep up with other cities and towns and what they're paying employees. We conducted a market study, and this proposed budget includes that adjustment for, for employees. The other part is, because of also our growth, is our capital needs associated with that growth in employees, and maintaining our facilities, our vehicles, and the continued expanding of that as well. So, you'll see this theme throughout Leslie's presentation as well. All in all, it's a balanced budget as state law requires, and I'll turn it to Leslie now for more of the details.
Thank you, good evening. So, our budget isn't super exciting this year, but some of the big things that we're looking at, as he said, was, is the market study, which will impact almost all of our employees. We've previously introduced some increases for our police staff, so they were not included in that study, but they would be getting a step this year, and then the rest of the employees were included in the study. As far as our revenues go, the state's shared revenues are expected to remain very positive for the upcoming year. The state is very flush with cash right now, and sales tax activity has been very good as well, and we expect that to continue. We are planning on issuing a revenue bond, provided the market maintains, and that is something new for the city. And we have a lot of capital projects planned, because we have some fund balances, and we have some federal money that we received that is to be used for one-time expenditures. So, this is just a high-level summary of the different types of funds. We have our general fund, all of our special revenue funds combined, and our capital fund. And this is our summary of our budgeted balance for the year. We're at a hundred and twenty-two million dollars. That includes a thirty-million-dollar bond-issue placeholder, so that is much higher than what we would normally see, and we wouldn't see that next year. I'm just going to give some very high-level overview. You can see, this is what we look at in the general fund. The city sales tax is almost half of our revenue source, and between state shared, sales tax, state revenue sharing, and county vehicle license tax, that's almost the rest of our revenue right there. We have some very small fees and charges that come in from recreation, from court, from police, but the majority of it is just sales tax and intergovernmental revenues. And our expenditures, our biggest expenditure is personnel. And then, it goes to purchased services and commodities, and a small amount out of the operating budget out of the general fund for capital assets. This does not include the capital fund, which is a separate expenditure, which we'll be going over. Then for our special revenues, this year, we actually received the money, but we can't count it as revenue for the ARPA money, but we will be able to count it as revenue next year, and so, that's kind of skewing our revenues. It is a one-time revenue source from the federal government that is to be used for specific things. So, normally, it's a much different picture. This fiscal recovery fund will not be there next year unless something new happens. And then our expenditures, again, we have programmed a lot of that money in the first year that we get it. A lot of it will be coming in years two and three, so it's not quite as much. We are planning a lot of HERF and street projects for the upcoming year as well. And capital projects. So, I broke the capital projects out into a couple different areas, and kind of the type, the area that we're doing the projects in, information technology, public safety, parks and recreation, library, public works, and also the funds that they're coming from. So, for the fiscal recovery funds, which is that ARPA money, we're, we're doing a lot of work in public works, which will be their new CAD RMS system, and some police equipment. A lot of it is going to be for public works, for our retention areas and stormwater concerns, and then some in parks and recreation and library. The general fund balance as of fist, last year was twenty-one million dollars. We are taking some of that to use for our normal maintenance type of work. We're putting in some HVAC, we're doing repairs, roofing repairs, and we're also investing in our fleet vehicles that have come to the end of their life cycle. Some of the fleet vehicles from this year, we weren't able to purchase those cars this year, so we moved them into next year, so it's a little bit higher than normal for our fleet vehicles. And then, just to name some of the projects, some of the higher projects that we have is the dirtwater detention, the rodeo grounds that we're planning on purchasing, the MGC expansion, which will be some administrative offices that will be added on to the end of the multi-gen center, the public safety dispatch system, which includes their CAD RMS and new dispatch consoles, some fleet, and a lot of street improvements. So, that was all I have, and we can go back and look at any slides there if you have any questions on the budget. This is a new presentation, we didn't do, be quite like this last year, too, so if you have any comments, I, I welcome them, and then I'll try to improve it for next year.
Yep, that concludes our report.
Anyone got any questions?
I like this one better.
You like this one better, okay, that's good.
No, I just want to make one thing, one little statement for the public's benefit. We've already gone over this in detail. What Leslie just did was kind of an overview, but we've definitely looked at this, I've got lots of pages here. If anybody, am I allowed to share this, Bryant?
Yes, absolutely.
If anybody wishes to see, we've got lots more detail, but it has, what we were given wasn't just Leslie's, what she just did in five minutes, just a quick overview, just for your reassurance.
And, and all of the information is publicly available, it's attached as agenda items. All those attachments are available to the public to view everything you've seen.
When I came home with my budget book this year, my husband was shocked. He said, "Where's the rest of it?" It was very concise, and it was, it was very well done, and I know each year that I've sat down with staff, they've just gone through it, they've made it easier and easier for the layman to understand, and so, I'm really appreciative of it. And just, you know, like Tess said, we get a, a bigger version, and then, of course, we get to meet with staff and ask our questions and have our questions answered, but, great job, great job. It was very, very easy read, and very understandable for anybody.
Mr. Mayor, I will mention also, there is a, the tentative budget hearing is scheduled for Monday, May sixteenth, and that will be also a public hearing involved with that. But, that's where the tentative budget is considered by the council, and then on June twentieth is when the final budget adoption would be considered by council.
Yeah, and once we do the final adoption of the budget, then it's, basically, that's what we're going to spend. There's no, we can spend less, but we can't spend anymore.
That's right.
Or anyone else got any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, I'll adjourn the meeting.